Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock and time for the very first Beaver Creek City zoning meeting of 2024. I got it right this time, didn't say 2023. So I'll call the meeting to order with a roll call, please. Ma'am?
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Diker?
Here.
Mr. Loftus is absent. Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. And I need a motion to excuse our missing member.
Ms. Chard, make a motion to excuse Mr. Loftus.
Mr. Chard, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. We'll do that by general consensus, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Agenda for the meeting this evening. Any additions, corrections, changes? Since I see a giant crowd out there, actually no one, but the public hearings for the Camco rezoning and also for the racetrack rezoning have both been tabled. The Camco indefinitely and the racetrack rezoning until the February meeting, which will be on the 7th. So, yes?
By my understanding, they're both being requested to be tabled.
Right. I'm sorry.
You said they've been tabled.
I am sorry. You are, that's why we have a lawyer here, folks. So, we'll approve the minutes from last month. No, let's approve the agenda first. Agenda approval. I need a motion.
Mr. Chard, move to approve the agenda.
Ms. Charles, second.
I have a motion in a second and by general consensus. Okay. Minutes from last month. Any additions, corrections, changes, complaints? We're good? Then I want a motion.
Mr. Chard, move to approve the minutes from the December 6, 2023 meeting.
All right.
Ms. Charles, second.
And I have a second and we'll do that by general consensus.
Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining since I was not there.
That's true. Okay, well, we still have three of us, so we're good. Three being a quorum here. Now, we are back where my lawyer, our lawyer, told us to be. We have three public hearings scheduled tonight, but two have been requested that they be tabled. The first one is PUD 23-3, the Camco rezoning case, and the applicant has asked it to be tabled indefinitely. So, anything from staff on that? Then I'll ask for a motion on that, please.
Ms. Chard, motion to table indefinitely the PUD 23-3 Camco rezoning.
Okay.
Mr. Chard, second.
And I have a second and let's just do a roll call on this. Make it official, really official.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries for zero. I need a similar motion for the second public hearing, which is PUD 23-4, the racetrack Dayton rezoning case, which has been, the applicant requested that it be tabled until the February meeting.
Ms. Chard, motion to table the PUD 23-4 racetrack rezoning until the February 7 meeting.
Mr. Chard, second.
I have a second and let's read the roll for that, too, please.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries for zero. And we are down to our first and last item tonight, and that's PC 24-1 zoning code changes.
This is case number PC 24-1 for the purpose of reviewing an update to the zoning code.
And our latest addition to the Beaver Creek City Plan staff, Colin Carville, is jumping right in with both feet on his first case.
Yes, thank you for the introduction. My name is Colin Carville. I am the new city planner here, so I'll be working with you all a lot here moving forward. I'm very excited for that. So, we're here this evening to discuss some zoning code updates. Every year, we like to look at our zoning code and see maybe some flaws or issues that happened the past year that we'd like to address moving forward. So, this year, we kind of landed on our sign code. We thought that that could use some updates. We picked the brains of our staff that actually are involved with the enforcement of our sign code, as well as our great legal team here to kind of come up with some suggestions to, I guess, improve in our eyes, to improve the sign code. Some of those proposed changes are enhancing the clarity of what we consider a sign, as well as, I guess, covering previously unaddressed areas and offering additional guidelines for residential signage and residential districts. So, moving forward here, if you see, we have the attached code. Red underlined indicates that it's an addition, and it actually printed off a little different, but a yellow strike through reveals that it was removed from our current code. We will see a short presentation here from our legal team, just giving you a little background on how we came to some of these zoning changes through some case law that happened both previously in the past couple of years, as well as some history as well. So, that's kind of all I have as far as setting the table for this, and happy to answer any questions after the legal team presents what they have. Thank you.
Fire away.
Okay. All right, I'm going to stand up here. Okay. Okay. Legal team, just to introduce for the record, Steve McQ, law director, and Sarah Sparks is also from the firm assisting here. And we sort of divide this into two parts here. And if I push the button, as Randy said, yay, it worked. Okay. What we want to do is go through the sign code, and just, what I want to do is just very surely give you a little synopsis of why and what we were even looking at and how we start down this process. So, without further ado, all right. Okay, Randy, I think we'll go this way. Yay, there we go. All right. With respect to the sign code, and I, this was sort of an analogy I came up with because I thought, you know, how best to explain sign codes and read under the Reed decision under Austin, which we'll get to. And what I was trying to say is before, you know, before the Reed decision, sign codes were very categorized. We categorized, like this closet, yep, you know, and I'm sure if you could look in the drawers, they'd be categorized by, you know, socks, et cetera, et cetera. So, you would categorize things, real estate signs would have one class, yard sales another class, political signs another class. And so, you would make these number of changes, and so, sign codes were, if you wanted to know how you could have a political sign, you'd look that section up, yard sign, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. After, though, and Reed was in 2014, and Justice, these were both Supreme Court decisions. Justice Thomas wrote this one. And the next case to come along was in '22. And as a result, though, of the Reed decision, sticking with that, is Reed would no longer allow you to categorize things, but by, because by categorizing things, you were making a content-based analysis, and you cannot regulate based on content. And so, and Reed was interpreted, and Reed decisions kind of stood for the position that if you read, if you had to read the sign, which you got to read the sign to tell you what it is, you were regulating based on content. So, it created that closet where everything was sort of mixed up. And it became very, very difficult for communities to regulate. It was very difficult for a lot of federal judges, because again, these are all mostly federal cases, to make a determination of how is this going to be interpreted? So, as a result of that, though, and based upon cases after the Reed, it became apparent, and this really falls back to the Austin case in 2022, is that the Supreme Court itself recognized that it was very, very difficult and a lot of struggles to interpret exactly what the Reed decision was. So, we end up in a situation now where we distinguish between a commercial sign, non-commercial, and that was a lot of what was done in this proposed changes. And we also did it clearly with the idea of reading a number of cases to create something that is, we believe, to be constitutional. I mean, if we end up with a new case, we'll, hey, you know, these sign codes are forever going to be changing based upon how the court interprets things. But for now, we have done, I think, a good job of creating a code that complies with the current law. So, some things, and just to go through real quickly, you know, what we cannot do is, again, we can't regulate signs based on content. That's still valid. We cannot regulate a sign based upon what somebody wants to put on it. Okay. One thing that, and this is an older case, but we can't limit a number of temporary non-commercial signs. That really applied to political signs. That's really what that case stood for. And the next one was, this is an Ohio case, Painesville. Judge Moyer was chief justice at the time. This one was where Painesville had some regulations on how long political signs could be displayed. It was very common years ago that political signs, and this categorization system would, you'd say, you can put political signs out 60, 90 days before an election, take them down when the election's over. What occurred, though, and my recollection is from reading the case, I think they were lawyers, who decided that they weren't, they didn't want to, they want a sign like Stop the War, okay, which is a political sign. I mean, some people may not think, you think of a candidate's sign as political, but Stop the War is a political sign. It's someone's political view. They're, so, and they, you know, said, no, we're not going to take it down. They got cited, and ultimately, the wins the Supreme Court, and they won. Painesville lost in that case. So, where we are now, though, and this is probably the most important part, is that the Austin case, which is the city of Austin in Texas, Regan was a billboard company, and Austin adopted a sign code that banned billboards. What they effectively did was they banned off-premise signs. You know, a business in Austin could advertise as much as they wanted to on their site. And being not content neutral, as Randy would say in discussions with him, he'd say, it's like, if McDonald's wants to advertise for Burger King on their sign, we're not going to regulate the content. We're just going to say it, you know. But now, under Austin, it does get a little trickier. But at this point, though, we can prohibit off-premise signs. And a lot of communities like doing that because off-premise signs tend also can lead to a lot of visual clutter. So, it doesn't prohibit anything with the businesses that are doing it. Businesses can advertise their business, not a problem. We provided a permit sponsorship signs at sports facilities, so that, but they're crafted in a way that they are designed to be focused on the playing field. Ban signs from the right-of-way. This is something that is important. We've reiterated that in the sign code, that is a position, has been a position in the city for some time. That's an older case, but that's really to prevent people in our right-of-way putting signs about, for whatever purpose, right? Where we have prohibitions on sticking signs on utility poles, they tend to be on most time in a right-of-way or public easement. And finally, with respect to, this mostly applies to political signs as generally, signs blocking traffic, blocking sidewalks, you know, the courts have been fairly open as to where and how many signs a citizen can have, like vote for so-and-so in their yard. But the court's clear that you can't block the sidewalk, you can't have a sign in your yard that blocks traffic, that people can't see the stop sign, or someone at the stop sign can't see oncoming traffic. And like, was, like I say, sidewalk, riding your bicycle, little kid, child riding down the sidewalk, you know, you got signs in such a manner that they don't hit the sign and get hurt. So, that is really the context of the changes. And I was going to have Sarah Sparks kind of go through five or six points of some of the significant changes. Really wasn't going to go through every change because some of them are capitalized with C and things of that nature. But, and then afterwards, certainly ask, be glad to address questions. So, all right. Sarah, you're up.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Sparks, and happy new year, by the way. So, it's good to be here. As Steve said, I am an associate attorney at Coolidge Wall. I work with Steve in our municipal department. And I worked with Steve on making these changes to the sign code. So, I'm going to go over just, I've selected five substantive changes that we've made. And if you have questions, feel free to ask them, but I also know when we're done, you'll be able to ask staff questions as well. But if something doesn't make sense to you, just, you know, chime in, please let me know. So, the first change that I'm going to discuss is on page 21. It's in the definition section, and it has to do with the definition of a sign. Really what we did is we added a section clarifying what is not a sign, because we want to be really clear about what that is. And really, you know, it's pretty obvious, but sometimes we want to just make sure we state the obvious so it's clear in the code. And again, works of art, holiday displays, those will not, do not fall under sign code regulations. So, we wanted to be very clear about that. The next change I want to discuss is on page 33. This has to do with exempt signs. Let's see here. I feel like this podium is just a little bit too tall for, for my, I wish I could adjust it. Or me, I could, yeah, I might need a stool next time. So, with exempt signs, you know, Steve mentioned the Reed decision where you cannot base your regulations on content. So, when you start having a long list of exempt signs, it starts looking like you're regulating signs based on content. So, we really narrowed this list a little bit. And so, you know, you'll see, we've deleted a lot of stuff. For example, flags, we deleted that because they're not really signs, so we took that out of there. Other sections or other types of signs that were exempt, they didn't really seem to have a compelling reason to be exempt. Some of them, for example, the previous number two was permanent ground signs located at the entrance of a commercial establishment. Didn't really seem to, you know, why is that exempt? There was really no compelling reason. So, we really cleaned up this section to make it clearer. And then kind of to go along with that, on page 35, well, actually, it begins on 34, where we start talking about prohibited signs. Now, there's a pretty big list here of prohibited signs. We took out some language, we added clarifying language. You'll notice this section, we start adding the word "commercial" just to make sure that a lot of these regulations apply just to commercial signs, they don't apply to non-commercial signs. The biggest ones I wanted to mention is on page 35, where we have added three new exempt, or not exempt, prohibited signs. Billboards, as Steve said, the Austin decision kind of gave cities the ability to prohibit off-premise signs. So, that is what Beaver Creek has chosen to do here with prohibiting billboards, off-premise signs. And then we added a clarifying point that dangerous or defective signs are prohibited. We don't want people having dilapidated signs that could just, you know, with a big gust of wind, could end up in the street, could end up on the sidewalk. We don't, we want to prevent that. Second to last is on page 39. I really just wanted to point out here, in this section, you'll notice quite a few changes, but this is where we really start to distinguish between commercial and non-commercial signs. We kind of noticed when we took a look at Beaver Creek's sign code, it was, it didn't say it, but it was geared more towards commercial regulations. And we wanted to just make that clear. And we also wanted to make sure that in residential areas, non-commercial signs were not being heavily regulated. So, if somebody wants to put up their political signs or their, you know, graduation signs that you are starting to see now, they can do that, and they cannot be as heavily regulated. And then last, I just want to mention some of the new sections we added, that those began on page 55. So, the first thing, and Steve touched on this, too, is the sports facility sponsorship signs. We realized that when you ban off-premise signs, you could have the unintentional effect of banning our Little League sponsorships. We don't want to do that. If, you know, Skyline or UDF wants to sponsor Little League, they can, they should be able to have their sponsorship sign. It's a very specific purpose geared towards the ball field, so it's not technically a billboard. We wanted to keep that avenue open so that, you know, we can still have businesses are able to advertise and support, you know, and not just Little League, it could be really any sports facility or something like that. So, we crafted this section to make sure that we left that avenue open. And the other ones, you know, we added a scope, a viewpoint neutrality, consent of the legal owner. Those are really just standard sections that most sign codes have that we felt like the Beaver Creek sign code was missing. So, those were just the five points I wanted to make. Happy to answer any questions, or if you have questions for staff, happy to step down.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
As this, do you have anything to add before we go to the public hearing? Because this is a public hearing.
No, I think, I think as an example of, as an example on page 35, I think I cited the Painesville decision there. It was in the PowerPoint there. There was a reference to defective signs, dangerous or defective signs, and adequately, my microphone is on.
No, that was me making sure mine was.
The light's on. I don't know, the microphone is on. No, the only thing I was going to say is, yeah, for some reason, the light's on, but apparently not working tonight. Like on page 35, I just was just going to cite to, there's a reference to defective signs, adequately anchored. That really is the Ohio Painesville case, which Judge Moyer and the court at that, in that decision, effectively talked about, signs could stay up as long as they're not trashy, creating a nuisance, dangerous type situation. That really is, that was that type of situation. So, inadequately anchored, again, you know, if someone wants to put a sign up, a political sign, they can put a political sign up, but it's got to be anchored enough that not a decent breeze comes through and it goes blowing down the street and potentially ends up in traffic or hitting people on the sidewalk. So, it's just sort of the connection between cases and the changes that we're recommending. So, I just want to point that out.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, it, we will now ask if there's anyone here who wishes to either speak for or against, or ask questions about this. Don't be shy. Did we get any written input on this?
No.
Okay. Last chance. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. I will start to my right for questions and...
Just one question for staff.
Yes, sir.
So, if you could refresh my memory, is this going to create non-conforming signs? And if it does, what, how would those non-conforming signs be handled?
So, it would create non-conforming signs, and those would be considered grandfathered in under the current code.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions, sir.
Okay. No questions.
Dang, well, I would be remiss if I didn't have a few. Just, I guess, one of the things that I would like just a little bit of clarification on, and whoever, jump right in, on the sports facility sponsorship signs, that works fine for like a baseball field where you've got an outdoor venue, but what about a, an enclosed facility that has a sponsorship on it? For example, and I doubt if we'll ever have a large stadium built in Beaver Creek, but if that stadium was being sponsored or was named by a sponsoring company, that would be an off-premise sign.
Well, I think there's a difference, though. Naming a sport facility, like very popular, very common in the NFL or professional sports, right? It's the so-and-so stadium, right?
Okay.
It's not, it's not, they're naming the stadium, but they're not advertising it, you know, hamburgers or cars for sale this week, you know, we've got this car for sale. I mean, there's a difference between naming something as, and, you know, in my opinion, that is not, that certainly is not intended to be, I mean, we have very, I mean, it's not uncommon to have where facilities, someone wants to donate a million dollars to have a gym named after them. That's wonderful, great, you know, it serves a public purpose. They're not doing it to get advertising for their business, they're doing it as a civic duty because to provide, you know, it's commonly done. Look at, I mean, look at hospitals, if they have sections, you just go down to Miami Valley, you have different buildings in different areas with people's name. And I don't think anyone would say they're doing it for advertising as much as a public donation, so.
Okay. That would almost be like the definitions when you're talking about flags. If someone is a real Porsche fan and they're flying a flag that says Porsche and has the Porsche shield on it, that's permitted because it's not advertising, it just has the name.
Yeah, yeah. You love, I know, BMWs.
So, I could fly my BMW flag if I wanted to.
BMW flag, you know, and you can stand by it with a sign that says, I love BMWs. You're not, you're not a BMW dealer. You're not really advertising.
So, it's simply the name as opposed to advertising the product?
Yeah, something like that.
Got it.
And you're not doing it in a commercial manner.
Right, got it.
You know, so I think we have to recognize situations like that.
Good. Thank you very much. Second helpings, gentlemen. Okay, then, I guess we need a motion.
Ms. Chard, motion to approve PC 24-1.
Mr. Chard, second.
I have a motion in a second. Any final words, gentlemen? Ms. Melissa, if you would read the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Good job, gentlemen, ladies. We got to keep these things up to date because things change faster than we can write. And with that said, we are fresh out of... And with that said, we are fresh out of agenda items, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chard, move to adjourn.
Ms. Charles, second.
Have a second, and we are 6:30. Thank you very much.